Welcome to tonight's forums for candidates seeking contested school board seats in the Jefferson City School District in the April 2 election. I'm Gary Caster, Managing Editor of the Jefferson City News Tribune, and I'll serve as moderator of tonight's forum. I want to thank the city for the use of the chambers for this forum, as well as JCTV for taping and airing the forums. We'll also be streaming the events over newstribune.com. Tonight, our forum will feature the candidates for JCPS Board of Education. Four candidates will be seeking two terms, seeking two terms on the board, two seats on the board, I should say. Prior to tonight, the candidates were advised the rules of the forum. As we begin the questions, the candidates will have two minutes to respond to each question. Seated next to me is Rebecca Martin, News Tribune City Editor. She'll serve as timekeeper for the responses. None of the questions have been shared with the candidates beforehand. During the course of the forum, I may ask a candidate a follow-up question in hopes of getting a clearer understanding of his or her stance. A candidate may also be granted time to respond or to rebut an answer from a previous question. So now, let me introduce the candidates for tonight's forum. To my left is Stephanie Johnson. She's the Executive Director of the Jefferson City Boys and Girls Club. She's had a career in nonprofits and service that has included jobs with the United Way, Samaritan Center, and March of Dimes. Seated next to her is Steve Brown. He's retired after a career in insurance and is a former Marine. He lives just outside Holt Summit. Next to him is Jessica Green. She's an Administrative Assistant in Lincoln University's Office of Student Financial Services. She's also a youth leader at Jefferson City Church of God in Christ, and she directs the Praise Dancers there. Next to her is Lorelei Schwartz. She's an incumbent school board member who has served one term on the board and is the current treasurer of the board. She's an accountant with Schwartz and Liqueur in Jefferson City. The order for the questions and closing statements was determined before the forum by drawing lots. So now, we're going to jump in and just start the questioning. We'll start with Stephanie. Stephanie, how would you, as a board member, support, expand, or improve upon the district's efforts to get all of its students reading at or above their grade level?
Well, I want to start with saying I'm really proud of the school board and the administration for making that a focus. We need more children in our district reading at or above grade level. And I think the initiative, the JC Reads, where we're really putting that focus on the elementary and middle school students to increase the time that they're spending reading. I know there was some talk amongst the board and the administrators regarding taking the money that will be saved with the time change, the start and end time, and utilizing that to divide out language arts and reading at the secondary level. And I think that's a really good idea because that's a lot of curriculum and a lot of content that is being put into one class. If we are working to ensure that reading in itself is a designated core class, I think that will help. You know, the elementary schools receive title funding to give some additional reading services to elementary children. There's not a lot at the secondary level. So I think that is a really good idea. I would support that. And I think we just have to continue to not only read to the children and have them read, but we really want to encourage reading in the home. It's really important that children are reading beyond their classroom. I know at the Boys and Girls Club, reading is a daily part of what we do. And so, it's just continuing to push funding and resources and making it a priority and not just changing course until we really move the needle in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Steve, same question.
It's obvious that reading should be a priority. Without, if you can't read, you can't do anything. You cannot weld. You cannot build a car. It's the basis, foundation for learning, is being able to read. The very fact that the school has put a priority on it, while they ought to, I find right now, the reading threshold of who can read and who can't read, abhorrent. I mean, even if it's the top, from Stacey Monwood, 65 to 75 is a goal. I find 75 percent even being able to read is underachieving. We need to be able to read. These kids need to be able to read. Parents as Teachers is a program that the State of Missouri has that they started it again, and they've funded it, and it's a good program. Start these kids, parents, because, you know, parents don't have, you can't fire the parents. Parents are the parents. So, you've got to help the parents help themselves. There's no manual to raise your kids. You do the best you can. But sometimes, your best isn't just quite good enough, and you need a little help. Parents as Teachers does that. When these kids come into kindergarten, they should already be able to know their numbers and be able to know their alphabet, and that would be a goal there. But 75, 65 to 75 percent success ratio, to me, is, it's not good enough for me.
Okay. Thank you. Jessica?
I'd say it starts by first understanding that not every child learns the same way. So when you decide that you want to increase reading, but you take this standard and it's the same across the board, it's not necessarily going to work because what works for child A is not going to work for child B. So the first step is knowing how each of these children are learning, and then implementing programs that are going to help them learn in their own specific way. Next, I agree that it does also start in the home, but we've got to provide parents with the resources and the education that they need because some parents, probably themselves, have a hard time reading. So if I am struggling with reading, it's going to be hard for me to teach my child how to read. So we've got to focus on the whole family so that the kids can benefit and their reading levels will increase.
Thank you. Lorelei?
Well, I do agree with Jessica, and one of the things that we're looking at in the school district is more dyslexia screenings so that we can catch some of these children earlier and get them resources earlier so that they don't struggle for very long. The other thing that we've invested in is the Eye Ready program, which tests children because we need to know where they are so we can meet them where they are. And that has been a very successful program. And I think that, once we get these things in place and we can get them younger and younger and get them, keep them on their grade level, reading level, we won't have to pick up the middle school and high school kids who are behind. So we are diverting resources to this, and we are explaining to every teacher, the PE teachers, the algebra teachers, how important it is for reading. And so, they're teaching their subject, but they are keeping in mind that we are focusing on reading, and we want them to focus on the children reading in all classes, if they can. And so, we are just putting a lot more emphasis on that with every teacher.
All right. Thank you. Okay, our next question, we'll start with Steve. Former board members have suggested they felt pressured to not share their thoughts on school board decisions. Instead, they were instructed to quote toe the line and let the board president be the voice so that there's a unified message coming from the board. If elected, what would be your approach as a board member?
I would be available. I would, I plan on going to PTA meetings and things like that and being available to the public. If they ask me what's going on, I'm going to tell them. I heard, I read in a paper about that accusation. I heard the president of the school board, Mr. Bruce, on the radio address that. I don't know that I got to affirm yes or no out of it, but I just find that hard to believe that there's a secret squirrel pact amongst the board members that they don't talk to the public. But I can assure you that if I'm elected, I will talk to the public because that's who elected me.
Okay. Thank you. Jessica?
I believe in honesty, and I believe in transparency. I'm not going to, I mean, I wouldn't go out just saying stuff, you know, without knowing what it is I'm talking about, but I definitely don't believe in secrecy. The board is here to serve the students and the staff, not the other way around. So if they have a question, I believe that we should answer their questions honestly. We shouldn't be around the bush. We should be direct. This is what's happening. This is what is going on. Because when you're not, they don't trust you to make the best decisions for them.
Okay. Thank you. Lorelei?
Well, I do think it's important to, for the board president to speak on behalf of the board, but I don't believe that that means that the board members are hindered in what they can speak about. I speak to lots of people every day about board activities, but generally, it's the board president who speaks to the press, not that they can't speak to any of the other board members, but that is kind of the role of the president. But I wouldn't say that, I certainly have never felt hindered in speaking to anybody about anything, including the press. When Phillip calls me, I answer Phillip's questions. So I, you know, I don't think that that's happening at all. I don't feel it, at least I didn't feel that way.
Okay. Thank you. Stephanie?
I think right now, we're in a place where it's got to be about trust. It's all about trust. Our community's trust in our administration, in our school board, the teachers' trust in the administration and the school board. And I think that philosophy or that mindset just feeds into that mistrust. I, if I were elected, I would, I would be shocked if someone said that I couldn't speak about my experience or my opinion. I just, that would be unacceptable to me. I just, I have a hard time thinking that that is going on. I hope it is not. It wouldn't be something that I would support.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Jessica. The school district has six active lawsuits against it, including four employment discrimination lawsuits. Three of the employment discrimination lawsuits have been filed in 2019. This question comes from Reader Holzum. If elected, what will you do to change the culture that contributes to lawsuits?
It starts by taking a look at what you're doing wrong. And when it comes to discrimination, diversity is important, starting at the top, for starters. I say that all the time. You have to make sure that there are people who are going to look at a situation before they fire someone or before they choose to let someone go. They're going to look at it with an open mind and an open heart and really figure out what's going on and make sure that they're not being, that the person who's being let go is not being fired because of, whether it be race, their age, their sex, just to make sure that we are doing everything that we can do to ensure that we are not treating people differently based on those situations and those issues. But again, it starts by having a diverse group of people at the top who are making those decisions.
By the way, a follow-up, do you believe that exists now, a diverse group of people at the top?
No. Our Board of Education building is diverse as far as sex is concerned. There's both male and female, but when it comes to culture and it comes to race, it's not diverse. The top is not diverse at all when it comes to that.
Okay. Lorelei?
Culture is something that we've been working on for quite some time. When Larry got here four years ago, this district was in a huge mess. The culture in all of the buildings was negative. It, you know, that's when the lawsuit started. And you can't move that needle immediately, but I do believe that we are moving the needle. I believe that there were some poor hiring practices that happened before Larry got here. I believe that there were people hired for positions that had no business being in those positions, which is why our APR was 70.7 when Larry got here four years ago. And you have to make difficult decisions sometimes about getting the right people in the right position so that you can move the needle. Our APR now is 87.3 in four years, but sometimes, that means people become disgruntled. I can't tell you whether they felt hostile, like they were in a hostile environment or not. They obviously felt like they were in a hostile environment. So we still have work to do in that area. But I will tell you that I just think that there were a lot of people in positions that shouldn't have been where they were. And, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to truly educate our children, we have to have the right people in the right positions. And sometimes, those are really hard decisions to make. But we are still working on the culture, and we know, but I, when I talk to the teachers, and I actively ask the teachers, "How are things? How are things feeling?" You know, "Things are feeling pretty good. Things are feeling better. We're trying to move the needle. It doesn't happen overnight."
So how far along in the process do you believe that you are?
I don't, I don't really know. I, that's hard to tell. I haven't been in every building. I think some buildings are struggling more than others, and I haven't been in every building to ask every teacher, but I think things are getting better. And I can tell you this, I think that there's a whole lot more of asking teachers and staff about how they're feeling and what their thoughts and concerns are than there was happening four years ago. And I think that they're feeling better about that, and we are trying to respond to those things.
Okay. Thank you. Stephanie, same question.
When it comes to the lawsuits, I think that, on one hand, like Lorelei said, you have to ensure that the people who are educating our children are well-equipped, that they have the tools to be successful, because at the end of the day, it is about the education that we provide to the children. Having said that, it's so important that policies and procedures are in place, that policies dictate the way, the culture of the system, and the procedures are in place that have to be followed. I have not, I don't have access to the performances of these individuals. I don't know if these lawsuits are disgruntled or if there was legitimate discrimination that was happening. But I always think from a board level, it is about first and foremost ensuring that your policies and your procedures are looked at, analyzed, and are practiced.
Steve?
Well, I know one thing, Jefferson City School District ought to be on the Christmas list, get a Christmas card from that attorney that's making a living off from us, that's for sure. I believe there's 1,400 employees, am I correct? 1,400 employees, so grand scope of thing, it's a small percentage, but one's too many. It's a very small percentage of the disgruntled employees, but that could very well be that proverbial tip of the iceberg as well. You can, there's a lot of buzzwords you can say, use, and develop this and do this and want to go forward, and, but, one thing, one of the reasons I decided to run was when I started getting the whiff of these lawsuits, and I went straight down and said, "Hey, I'd like to run for school board." And this was one of the catalysts of it, was these lawsuits. The, one of the things that the school board has done, which to me made perfect good sense, they, the HR person and the litigation person, the legal person, they split the jobs up. They used to be the same person. Your HR person there would be the one that would decide, you know, if it's a good or bad, if you've been discriminated against or sexual harassment, they would make that decision and whatever. Now, that job has been split, bifurcated, and it should have been a long time ago, for that matter. And I think Ms. Schwartz alluded to the fact that there were some people in positions that shouldn't have been, and that right there was a combination of a position that should not have been one person. I don't, as far as discrimination and the suits and things that are going on, I guess we'll find out because someone needs to find out. There's a captain of the ship, and the captain has a boss, and that's us.
Next question. We're going to go deeper into the subject of lawsuits, in large part because, much like Steve mentioned, it is a topic that is resonating within the district, so I think it deserves a little bit more attention. So we'll start with Lorelei. Do you think the board's effectively responded to the workplace climate and culture within the district? If you're to serve another term on the board, are there things you would improve to address the level of trust between staff and administrators? And how would you tangibly define or measure progress and success?
You know, we now talk to the staff about climate and culture in the elementary schools, and we implore on them that they need, and they have, they are now rounding each week in the elementary, in all the schools. Every board, at the board office, each one of the members there goes to a school each week to round, to hear the boots-on-the-ground telling them, "Here's what our problems are. Here's the resources that we need. Here are things that we, here's how behavior is happening in our schools, and what can we do to help ensure that our kids are getting educated?" And we're responding to those things, particularly over at Morrel Heights. We had some behavior issues. We had teachers, our parents contacting us, and the board office went right over, and we put things in place right away, and, you know, and then we're responding back to those teachers and saying, "Okay, how are these things working?" You know, "We just started breakfast in the classroom there." And I went over and visited and spoke to one of the teachers and said, "Is this more burden for you than it is benefit?" She said, "Absolutely not." But I wanted to hear for myself, and I think that all the administrative staff is going over to all the schools and they're asking, and I think that's really improving the culture. And how do we measure that? You know, we're doing surveys. We're surveying the teachers more often and asking them, "How are they feeling?" And we're responding to those instead of putting them on a shelf. And I think that we are more apt to have the hard discussions that maybe were ignored in the past. And so, that's, and we, as board members, are following up on that and asking the questions.
Okay. Couple follow-up questions to that, so I understand. What is rounding?
They just go to the schools, and they walk around the hallways and visit with the teachers and visit with the custodians and the lunch people and the principals and the assistant principals, and just get a pulse of what's, how that building is feeling. Is it feeling stressful? Is it feeling calm? Is it, are they feeling like they need resources? They're trying to get feedback from the people in the schools so that they can respond appropriately. If you're not communicating with the people, how do you know what the problem is?
And which school are you assigned or have volunteered?
I, I'm not rounding. It's the administrative staff in the board office, but we, Ken Inlow and Lindsay Rowden do visit each, a school a month, I think, every school, and just go sit and maybe read in the library with the kids, so that we do have board members in the schools. I go to various schools for various functions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next question will be to Stephanie. What would you do as a board member to improve the climate and culture within the school district, and how would you define or measure progress and success?
Well, I think they did a good job by starting with the survey, and the results of that came out last fall. I was at the board meeting when Brenda Hatfield presented those results, and I have to be honest, I was a little surprised at some of the responses. They were a little lower than I would definitely like to see. And I think that's, that's your baseline. That's where you start. We all like to tout our accomplishments and what we're doing great, but if you're going to move the needle, you have to focus on where are the lowest scores. I would look at that survey, and I would say, "I want to see the three things where we scored the lowest." And if I recall, one of them was communication from, from the administrative office. That's my recollection, being one of them that I thought was concerning. The rounding is wonderful that that's taking place now, and it's my understanding that the administrators rotate so they can get to different buildings. I think you have to give a voice to the teachers and the principals. They have to know that not only do they have a voice, but that someone is listening to their voice. It doesn't matter if you ask someone their opinion, but you never take their advice. Your boots-on-the-ground teachers know more about what's really happening in our schools than anyone else. I would also like to see those survey results by building. I know some principals have incredible culture in their schools and others struggle. And what can we do to ensure that principals who have a school with unhappy teachers, what can we do to mentor those principals to be stronger leaders within their school?
Okay. Steve, what would you do as a board member to improve the climate and culture within the school district, and how would you define or measure progress and success?
Well, visiting with the troops in the field, call it boots-on-the-ground, call them teachers, that's, that's where it starts. Because it's like the old saying, "If mama ain't happy, ain't nobody happy." If the teachers aren't happy, if they're, they're not going to be doing a good job. You've got to support the teachers. The teacher retention, teacher retention, it would probably be one of the ways I would measure success. Blair Oaks has no problem with teacher retention. Matter of fact, a large part of their staff are former students at Blair Oaks. Now, why isn't Jeff City that way? I don't know. I'm not privy to all the reports and things that maybe some have seen because I'm kind of an outsider coming in. I don't know how much gravitas, as a board member, that I'll have. I don't know. But I plan on finding out and going to the schools and walking around. I don't know why the principals, I would ask that the principals and the assistant principals in the schools sit with the teachers and monitor and see what's going on as well. And by the way, the breakfast in the classroom that was mentioned, it's been a huge success. Huge success. It's good, somebody had a good idea. I'm not used to that, but it was, it was a good idea.
All right. Thank you. Jessica, after news broke of the most recent lawsuit filed against the school district, you publicly called for, quote, "New administration and board members." What exactly were you proposing? What do you think that approach would solve or accomplish, and how?
So, I'd say that people need to either be removed or they need to be educated. So I had the opportunity to actually click on the link and actually read the court petition. And our superintendent is alleged to have said things that not only offended me as an African-American woman with African-American children, but as a woman in general. And like I said, I was not at any of those meetings where he's alleged to say those things, but there comes a point when you have been in the education game too long to continue to be ignorant or to continue to just let whatever fly out of your mouth. So if people are not going to think before they speak, or if they are not able to recognize the position that they're in, then either they need to be removed or it calls for serious education for how they can offend other people or how things that they sound look.
So exactly what were you proposing, and what do you think that, that approach would accomplish or solve?
So, I mean, I, like I said, I propose either education or removal of people who are just going to let whatever it is fly out of their mouth without even thinking about it. So when I think about, for example, someone who, a superintendent who would possibly say that we need to watch for children of color and saggy pants, you don't get to say that because, just because a child is of color or wears their pants saggy, what is it that you're watching out for exactly? So either, I mean, I would, like I said, people just have to watch what they're going to say, educate themselves. If they don't, if we can't give them the education, then someone needs to come and teach them the education, or they need to be gone. That's the bottom line. You just cannot say that and feel that way about anybody, especially our students that we are dealing with. We are here to nurture them and guide them through school, and we can't look at them because they are a child of color or because they wear saggy pants or because they're disabled or whatever the case may be, and feel like we need to be careful and cautious of those kinds of children.
Okay. Thank you. Stephanie, next question, we'll start with you. This comes This comes from reader Jane Lester. Do you think JCPS should have more proactive community town halls? She notes that meetings have been called to address problems after they have occurred and changes the schools want to make, but no meetings have been called to update the community on the results of past meetings, or to listen to concerns or explain new programs such as changes in instruction and testing involving technology?
I think that the district, I mean Larry, Dr. Lenthacum, you know, he has his, I think it's coffees with Larry, where he regularly has an opportunity for members of our community to come, talk to him, ask questions. I know he has very much an open-door policy. He will meet with just about, just about anyone. I do think it's a good idea to have formalized forums that actually talk about the results. I know the district is always sending out surveys, they're asking opinions, in a formal forum manner. But you're right, there isn't a formal forum, per se, that says, okay, here's how, here's how it laid out. Here's how we rolled that out and why. So I think that's a good idea. But I do feel that Dr. Lenthacum is quite open to communicating with the community and listening and meeting with them, and, you know, I think, I think people need to take more advantage of those.
Would you, would you suggest that the school board members should be at those forums or those environments rather than just administrators?
Absolutely. At the end of the day, a lot of the, the school board's making a lot of the decisions. So I, I would assume that the school board is making decisions based on the recommendations of people who are professional educators, who have experience in, in the education realm. But since they are ultimately the ones that are voting on these subjects, I think, absolutely. I would, I would want to be there to say, I, I voted yea or nay, and here's why. Here's why I made that decision.
Okay. Steve, same question.
Well, I, between Mr. Lenthacum's, the coffee clutches that he does, you know, and, and the newspaper, I, I, I think people have a lot of opportunities to see what's going on. And of course, there's this thing called the telephone, pick it up and call me, and I'll tell you. As far as Oregon, I think you can beat that horse to death, you know, having a, it loses its, its meaning if you have a town hall, you know, let's have one every week, let's have one every month. How many you want? It loses, the, the impact is gone. But there's plenty of ways for people to find out what's going on, and, and I would be more than happy to accommodate them.
Okay. I think the point of her question is, though, that it's more of a two-way communication rather than just hearing a report, I think is...
Well, in which medium do you want to communicate? You know, I, I can't call up every, you know, the public.
Right.
So how do you, how do you wish us to communicate, is my question to you. I would be glad to go to forums, I'd go to PTA meetings and things like that, and visit the schools, the teachers and such. As far as getting the word out, I think the word has been getting out, and here recently it hadn't been very good news.
Okay. Jessica, same question.
I'd say that public meetings are awesome. I think they're great. I've actually been to a couple of the Coffee with Larrys. I think the problem with them is when they are doing them. Coffee with Larry is at 7:30 the first Friday of every month, and when, I mean, that's the time that most people are getting ready for work and they're getting their kids dropped off. And the two, the few that I've gone to, there's not very many parents there, if any at all, because I can't come and get this information, because you're scheduling at a time when I'm getting off to work and I'm getting my kids off to school. So I think meetings are great. I think they should definitely happen. I think there should be more of them. Like Stephanie said, that don't only give you, you know, we want to know your questions, but, you know, now we're going to have a follow-up meeting and tell you the outcome of that last meeting. But you've also got to do them at a time when people can actually get to them, in order for them to be effective.
So what time would you suggest would be more conducive to attendance?
Like I know for a lot of people that I know, evenings work great, because you're off work. You can get kids settled in and do things like that, and then get to your meeting. So I definitely can say that although I love Coffee with Larry, and I think it's a great idea, 7:30 in the morning, I just don't feel like it works when you, if you're saying that you want parents to come and give you their input, and you want parents to come and be informed.
Okay. Lorelei, same question.
Well, I, I do think Coffee with Larry has been great. And the last meeting, people brought their kids with them, and, which was great, I thought. And they were elementary school kids. But I do think that maybe staggering that occasionally at Coffee with Larry, and maybe, I don't know, Ice Cream with Larry in the evenings or something. However, we had the two forums for the start times, and we got complaints about when they were, you know? And so every, every household has a different schedule and what's going to work, but, you know, I, I don't know that a Saturday is out of the question either, a Saturday morning, when maybe people aren't working and don't have school. But I, the, I like the Coffee with Larry because it is very much an open dialogue. They present usually what is the topic that they want to talk about today, and they usually, every time they've gone over the construction, how is the construction going? We get an update on that. We get an update on whatever the topic is. This time it's been start times. And then it's, the last 15 minutes is reserved for question and answer for whatever, anybody wants to ask about various things. So I think it's been a great dialogue, and I think it's a start. I think that there's always, I'm a big believer in that you can get better every day. I believe that. So definitely, I think that we could improve on some of the times.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Steve. JCPS earned an annual performance review score of 87.9% for the 2017-18 school year. That score will be a new baseline to compare against for the next few years, and the district has said it shows progress in students' reading proficiency. However, JCPS tied for the third lowest score out of 22 school districts in our area. What would your priorities be based on the district's latest APR score?
It's pretty dismal. I, I don't, I'm not sure what kind of tools that can be put in force to make kids learn. The teachers are the key. Something's not happening. There's something not going on there. Even the goal that they had set was low compared to other schools. I, I don't know why the Jeff City School District is performing so poorly. I'm not being privy to the reports, all the detailed reports and stuff. I know just about what everybody else knows from what I've read in the paper. You know, not been on the school board. I, I don't get the reports and things that maybe some people do that, that are in academia. I'm not part of academia. So I can only say that it is, it is poor, it's poor performance. How anybody can be proud of that, I don't understand.
Jessica, same question.
It definitely just goes back to figuring out what, how students are learning. Again, you can't teach all students the same. We want reading levels to definitely go up, we want them to rise, but we can't teach all of them the same exact way. Also, having people who specialize in reading and being able to figure out exactly why a child is struggling, getting parents involved, which I know sometimes can be hard, getting parents to understand that there is an issue, there is a problem, and giving them the resources they need to help take care of that at home. Children are in school for majority of their day, but when they get out of school and they go home, the same thing that they're doing in school to get their reading level up needs to be placed in their home, so that that way they're getting it in both places. So it's just a matter of knowing what's going on, figuring out with each child what your issue is and how we can specifically help you with your reading issue to make it better.
Okay. Lorelei, same question.
Well, here's where I'm going to use Jessica's word. Our school, our school population is more diverse than, I bet you, 90% of those 22 districts we're being compared with. Maybe if Columbia's in there, it's us in Columbia. So our children, we are serving a different type of children than we, you know how many children we have from a single-family home versus what Blair Oaks has from a single-family, or a single-parent home? I mean, it's a difficult comparison, but I can tell you, and people who don't really look at APR, don't understand a little bit what we're, what we're judged on, part of it's attendance. That's the reason why we backed up the school day, because studies show that when you start the secondary kids later, you get better attendance and better graduation rates, and those are two things that you are judged on for your APR. So we are trying to make responses to those, to increase our APR. We understand that 87.9 is a high level to beat, but we're putting things in place to get higher. And part of the thing was the start times. And I realize that was controversial, and parents didn't like that, because they have to find more daycare, but we're here to educate children. We're here to make sure they go to school and that they graduate. And studies show that that's going to happen. So the school district is responding daily to these things to get better.
Okay. Thank you. Stephanie, same question.
Sure. The APR is a very complex formula. It's so complex, I don't understand it. I know you can earn points for things, points are taken away for things. It's more than just a score. But I believe that Lorelei and Jessica are absolutely correct. You cannot compare Jefferson City's AP, APR score with Blair Oaks, with Eldon, with Russellville. We have such a higher free and reduced lunch rate. Really, Columbia in our area is, is the one we need to look at, and I know we're not where Columbia is. So again, it is about drilling down. Is it an attendance problem? Is it a test scoring problem? What areas specifically are we so below the curve that it's throwing the whole score off? And that's where we need to focus in, and really figure out, okay, what can we do to change that? And if, if attendance was what was really keeping us lower, then, you know, you have to do whatever you have to do to increase attendance. It is, I think sometimes the APR score can be a little misleading, because it's, it's so complex. You know, when I first saw it, I was, I thought it was just simply test scores and grades, and there's a lot, there's, you get points if you've increased year over year. So we can't compare ourselves to every district. I think it's fair to compare us to Columbia. You've got to drill down on where specifically are we underperforming.
Okay. We're going to drill down. JCPS earned 22.5 points out of a possible 30 for its graduation rate, 7.5 points out of a possible 10 for its attendance rate on the most recent APR. The district's 17-18 graduation rate was 84.5%. The attendance rate was 87.7%. How would you, as a board member, seek to improve the district's attendance and graduation rates? And we start with Jessica.
First, you have to figure out with attendance, why aren't kids coming to school? I know that there was just the thing done where they, the nurse sent out an email talking about how many flu cases we had. So for that, I think it's unfair to count that attendance against us, because, I mean, you don't want to bring your kids to school if they're sick, because then they just get other kids sick or staff members sick. So you look at why students are not in school. And then, what was the other part?
Graduation rates.
So, and when it comes to graduation rate, again, you just got to figure out what's going on that they're not graduating. Is it because I missed too many days, so I can't, can't graduate? Am I not reaching my credits that I can't graduate? And you've just got to work with each kid, again, to figure out what's going on, where are things lacking? Is it a mixture of school and home that's causing these issues? Because if it is, then we have to figure out how to get both of them in line with each other. And if it's just school, then we need to figure out what's going on with school. And if it's just home, then we have to figure out what's going on with home.
Lorelei, same question.
Well, as I just said, one of the big reasons that we wanted to push back the start times is because the pediatrician came and said, you know, the American Association of Pediatrics recommends that you start times later for these adolescent, the, the middle school and high school kids, because they, they need to sleep a little longer. And I think part of it is, they can't get up, and so they miss first block, and so they just don't come at all for school. So I'm really hoping that that's going to help increase attendance. The other thing that we know helps kids stay in school and graduate is being involved in an activity. And having a second high school is really going to improve that. I mean, we have a lot of activities at the current high school, but it's going to give more kids a chance to participate in activities, to have two separate high schools. And if we can get kids involved in activities, we know that that helps them stay in school and graduate. So those are two of the things that we're really focused on to change, to increase those numbers.
Okay. Stephanie?
A few years ago, I had a, a young man who was coming to the Boys and Girls Club, and out of nowhere, he starts getting Ds and Fs. He was a freshman at Simonson. And I went to meet with his school counselor to find out what we could do to help improve his grade. And the counselor said, if you really want to help this kid, you need to tell him to start coming to school, because he has the worst truancy record of any student in our, in our school. So that day after school, when this young man came to my office, I, as a mom, I was ready to chew on him. You know, you can't skip school. You got to go to school. Well, come to find out, mom had a change in her job, and it was older sister's responsibility to get him up and get him to school, but half the time she was at her friend's house. And he wasn't getting to school, because no one was home to wake him up. And if I'm not waking up my 17-year-old, he's definitely not going to school. So we bought this young man an alarm clock, and we showed him how to use it. And there are many children that are coming to our school with food insecurities, difficult environments at home, and obstacles, and I think we need to do a better job of finding out, if we have a child that is chronically missing, chronically late, we have to take the time to talk to them to find out what is happening that is causing that. So I think that is with attendance. With graduation, I am a firm believer that not every student is college-bound. I think that we have got to really look at our vocational education program. We have to ensure that we're providing an education environment that fits a lot of different kids. And I think, we, again, my experiences at Boys and Girls Club, but we had a young man who, who was not doing well here. And he was sent to go live with a relative in St. Louis, and their high school had this robust culinary program, and I know that we've added that, and that's wonderful. But I don't think, had he gone to that school in St. Louis, he would not have graduated. And so I think we have to really look at diversity in our education program, including vocation.
Okay. Thank you. Steve, same question.
Well, the start time was a good move. That was a good, good start to help attendance, for sure. The, we do have different types of kids than they do at the surrounding communities and stuff. I think we're like 30% minority in our school, which doesn't even reflect the community. I think the community's not that diverse, but we are, we got 30% minority. The, the attendance and graduation, the, I think having the more activities for the kids, I don't know if that was justification to build a new high school. I think if they wanted to do something, have an activity, they could have done it, could have been on the chess club, or cheerleader, or whatever at the school they were at, but I, I regress. The, we need, the teachers cannot do it all. We need the resources, as Ms. Johnson referred to, this, the children that, I haven't had these personal, because I'm, I don't have any children, they're all gone. I'm an old guy. But I've been around, I've seen a thing or two. We need the resources that we can help these families that do have these children, that, that need help. You know, we've got breakfast in school now, so the kids aren't hungry through the day. You know, there's churches and different things that could be of help, but the school can't do it all. We need the resources to be able to perhaps, if we see a problem in a school, to refer them to somebody, or we're going to have to get up off our wallets and provide that resource in the school so they can do it. We can't, teachers can't do it, and, and I certainly don't know the kids. I can't go to their, not that the mom and dad would listen to me anyway, but they do need help. need help. And we need to make that available to them.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Lorelei. This came from a reader. Effective responses to inappropriate and/or disruptive behaviors at school involve appropriate referrals and proper intervention. What goal can we craft for reducing non-constructive behaviors that does not suggest limiting referrals and time out of classrooms? More generally, the question is, how do you believe the district should address student behavioral issues?
Well, I'm going to turn to what Stephanie said. A lot of times, these behaviors are just a symptom of what's really going on with these kids. And I am not a believer in sending kids out of school. I am a believer of maybe having a, a separate room in the school for them to go to, to learn how to maybe calm down and learn, especially younger children. I'm, I'm speaking now to maybe elementary school children. Some of them don't have the social skills that they need in the classroom. And so, perhaps of transitioning in and out of the classrooms so that they can have some calm down time and go back into the classroom and see if they can have the proper behavior. And then if they can't, they go back to maybe the transition room. And with the older kids, you know, we took in a kid who was homeless and they tried to send him away from school. And I, I said, you can't send him away from school, he has nowhere to go. And we have to be cognizant of this, that some of these children do not have anywhere to go if you send them out of school. So, it's important to, for us to figure out how to keep them in school, not only for their class time, but to teach them proper behavior. And I think that once you get to the root of what the problem is, this man just needed an alarm clock. If we can get to the root of what's really causing the behavior, then we can solve these problems. It's a, it's a monumental task, but we're starting to put some of those things in place in some of our schools. And I think that we can, if we can get them at a really young age in the elementary schools with this behavior issue, then it's going to alleviate some of the problems at the older ages.
Okay. Stephanie?
I'm pretty passionate about this one because of where I work. There are so many children that come to school that cannot learn because there are so many other things going on. And it's not just the kids that need an alarm clock or the, or the electricity's turned off in their home or things of that nature. There are other children who they wrote, they, they're the boss in their house. You know, they call the shots in their home. Their parents lack some parenting skills and have lost control. And so, a child who calls the shots at home comes to school and they're prepared to call the shots at school and it doesn't happen and it causes conflict. And every, and everything else in between. But if we want to improve the APR scores and we want to get higher reading, we first, it's kind of like Maslow's hierarchy, we have to solve some other things first. We have to build some life skills. We have to handle teaching coping mechanisms of children. There are a lot of things that have to happen before a child is just open and ready to learn. I do not think that children should be taken out of their school and sent to a location and say, well, in this location, they will receive counseling and all these wonderful services, but what's the criteria to go there? What's the criteria to come back? What's the stereotyping once they're there? I've talked to some behavioral specialists in our district and frankly, there's not enough of them. Because we need to have a team, really, that's there for that crisis intervention. You know, there's got to be nothing worse for a teacher when she's trying to educate a group of kids and you have a meltdown of one child. I mean, I've heard stories of where they've had to vacate children out of a classroom. Oh, I only have ten seconds left, darn it. And so, to, to have a professional that's there for that crisis intervention and then a, a separate classroom where they can teach the children special skills, coping, emotional, and then, of course, the ability to follow up with the students when they're back in their classrooms to see how things are going. It's going to take a team.
Okay. Steve?
You know, you can sound heartless, you can sound pretty hardcore over this, but where do you draw the line when one child or two children are dragging down the whole class? Does Joe's kid deserve to be punished because Mary's kid misbehaves and disrupts the whole class? So, you've got to have discipline in a classroom. Now, with that being said, some of these children do have problems at home. They're disturbed, there's, they got issues. And they need to be helped. I don't think they should be moved from the school premises. I think that is a stigma. I remember growing up as a kid and there was this thing called the reform school. And they put kids away for misbehaving in class. You didn't have to pull a knife on somebody, you just misbehaved in class. A separate room in a school, especially for the little one, would be great with people there that are trained to know what's going on. Teachers aren't trained to do that. It's not their job, they need to be teaching. For the older kids, the same thing, they need to be talked to, communicated with. The smaller kids, you know, you've got to dig to find out what's going on there. The older kids, you can talk to them, but we need people on site to talk to them. But where the rubber hits the road, I'm here to tell you, it should be uniform in every school. Punishments should be severe and swift when necessary, compassionate when necessary. But we don't destroy the whole system, don't drag everybody down for one's benefit. As a former Marine, the platoon is only as strong as the weakest link. You've got to carry on, push on.
Okay. Jessica?
I agree with the ladies and everyone else that things that happen at home definitely affect kids when they go to school. I also agree that we also have to talk to parents and you can't really know what's going on with the students that we're serving if you're not already emerged in this community in some way, shape, or form. Whether it be volunteer service, whether it be you know them from your church. I also can say that I am one who I don't believe in OSS, just because you have kids who we don't need to have them at home because, as Stephanie said, we don't think bad things are going on. But then you have kids who I want to be at home because home is like a vacation for me from school. So, I'd say that a lot of redirecting is needed. And then I also need, would say, have to say that we have to, teachers have to evaluate exactly what behavior issues they're, they're having. I have an eight-year-old and I remember when I got the first phone call that, oh, she was playing in the snow and we don't want her to play in the snow. It's unreasonable for you to take her outside for recess when it's just snowed and then want her to not play in the snow. Now, I told my eight-year-old that you do need to do what's asked of you because they're not asking you to hurt yourself, but I also let that teacher know what you're asking is unreasonable. Like, I'm an adult and if I get outside in there snow, chances are I'm going to pick up some of it, make a snowball throw it or whatever. So, we have to make sure that what we're considering to be a behavior issue is actually a behavior issue, even from, I've been told here, she's just really wiggly. What does that even mean? Like, that's not means to tell her to go to the hallway. Like, what is, what do you mean by she's wiggly? So, we definitely have to take a look at different things that we can do. And conversations usually, from my experience, I've been that kid who got kicked out of school and then it was just, we're going to toss you back in your classroom and no one ever has a conversation with you to figure out, why did you do what you did and how can we help make things better for you? It was just, we're going to kick you out of school for a week and we'll send you back. But there's no, there was no understanding of why I did what I did. And no one walked me through how to make it better. So, we have to fix that as well.
So, do you believe, let's just follow up for all of you on the same question. So, we'll start again with Lorelei on this. Do you believe the district has sufficient resources to handle behavioral issues currently?
No way.
And what would it look like for it to do it? So, what have you mentioned, for instance, it should not be solely the teacher's responsibility, for instance?
Right.
So, what, what does it look like?
We need more mental health, we need more mental health professionals in our school. What Stephanie said, behavior interventionists. I mean, first of all, they're in, they're scarce, you can't find them. And since, we're going to have to divert resources from somewhere else, but we, we know it's important, we'd like to do it, but we have to find the people to fill the, the spots. And we have diverted resources to get the ones that we have. But we could use a whole, a whole bunch more. But one of the things we need to do is create partnerships with some of our mental health professional organizations. And we've started to talk to some of those organizations about what we can do to help partner to get some resources for our kids. So, that's what Larry is always talking about, learning, partnerships, stewardship. And we are constantly looking for ways to partner with people, just like our mentoring program with the, the Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And they've taken it over and they've done a fantastic job. And we need to do the same thing with mental health professionals. We've just got to get more resources into our school. And it's not even lack of money, maybe, I mean, we'd have to divert resources, but there's lack of people to fill the jobs.
Same question, Stephanie?
Totally agree. Each of our elementary schools needs a small team of professionals that are working. I heard a rumor, and I don't know if it's true or not, but that there was one behavioral specialist that was shared between the two middle schools. That is unbelievable to me because behavior problems, issues, social and emotional learning concerns in elementary, those are going to manifest themselves as substance abuse when we get into middle and, and high school. And that is reality. And it is reality that we have a substance abuse problem amongst our teens in our district. It is just the way it is. We have got to find a way to partner, to recruit, to train, find the resources to bring more counselors, and I don't mean academic counselors, I mean mental health counselors and behavior specialists to our district. The days of kids walking into a school just to learn are over. It doesn't happen anymore. I remember when I was in school in the seventies, you went to learn, all your teacher did was educate you. If you were not well behaved, you were just kicked out, you were just gone. And that doesn't happen anymore. And so, if we, for all children, it doesn't happen. And I think it's this, if it's not the school's responsibility, who is, who will be responsible? Who is going to step up to the plate to help the kids? Our mental health problem in Jefferson City is way bigger than our school district. Every needs assessment I have ever seen, mental health services, the lack of them rises to the top in every aspect of our community. This is a bigger picture than our district. Our district is, is right in there with every organization, every, every aspect of our community. We, we need mental health services, period.
Okay. Steve?
Well, I'd rather have too many than not enough when it comes to mental health, health in a school. I, I don't know if we'll get volunteers for the mental health community to fill in like as simple as the Big Brothers and Sisters do. Be nice if they would. We can communicate with them and see if that would happen. That's a good idea. It's all about the money. Mental health's a problem throughout the United States. Go to the VA hospital. It's a problem, it just is. The school system, I would have to disagree to a point. We're responsible for your child when he gets on the bus. We're responsible for your child when he's at school. Therefore, it's mental health there, it's resources available for that child. We're responsible for your child getting on that bus until he gets off the bus at home. That's when our responsibility ends. I mean, Jesus Christ himself said, there will always be the poor and suffering. We can only do the best we can with the resources that the Jefferson City School District has money-wise. But when they're at school, we need to put forth the best effort we can. And there's plenty of other programs out there that need to step up, whether it is parents as teachers, whether it is school, uh, uh, church programs, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA. It's got to be a combined community effort. The community has to do it. If the community doesn't have the will to step up, this Jeff City School District's not going to be able to do it.
Okay. Jessica?
My senior year of high school, I was in a program called A+. And so, I spent part of my semester, one of my semesters, I got to go into, or terms, I guess is what they called it then. I got to go into a third grade classroom and I got to basically be a teacher's assistant and it was really fun. So, one of the little girls started having a complete meltdown one day. And just simple, she didn't need a mental health professional with credentials on their name, she literally just needed someone to talk to. And that's exactly what I was there for. Sometimes we go, I'm not saying we don't need mental health professionals because we do, because there are serious mental health issues, but sometimes we go straight for the extreme, forgetting that before that, we could take small steps, such as, there's university across the street, down the street and across the street from Board of Education Office with a really good education program. There's no rhyme or reason why those students have not been brought into our classrooms, into our schools to just simply be there. So, if you've got one or two kids having a meltdown, the teacher can continue to teach. There is someone there that may not necessarily have their degree yet, but they can pull a child aside and just simply say, what do you need? What can I do to help you? I mean, I was a senior in high school when I was able to help a child having a meltdown. So, it's, it's, sometimes it's really kind of, it's not as hard as what we're trying to make it. Until we can get the mental health professionals in the classrooms, there are things that can be done to fill in until that day comes. And like I said, sometimes it's literally just a matter of, I just need someone to talk to. I'm having a hard time right now in class, maybe I don't do good with a really good crowd. So, for this person that's in my classroom to be able to take me out of my classroom and just spend some time with me for a moment by myself, then when I go back into that classroom, my day goes smooth. Because at that moment, I just simply needed one person to just listen to what I was feeling at that moment.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Stephanie. Does a school district have a diversity problem? And if so, define the problem and explain how we should fix it.
We absolutely have a diversity problem in our school district. And I don't think that it's necessarily, from lack of trying, I think that the issue is, is that we're not thinking outside of the box. It's not enough to wait for diversity to come to you. We've, we've got to go out and we've got to figure out a way to do it. We have an HBCU in this community. Now, a couple of things that I've learned from Dr. Seymour, the Dean of Education over at Lincoln, is that it is very common for their education majors to get their degree and go back home to teach. People like to go back home to teach. So, then, his recommendation that I thought was great was, and that he's shared with the public schools, Jeff City Public Schools, is the Grow Your Own program, where you are cultivating and inspiring current students to enter the education field, where they are cultivated in a way to go off to college, wherever that may be, get their degree in education, and come home to teach here. And so, I think that's a really good idea and I think we should pursue that. I also think that we need to work closely with the education majors at Lincoln, ensure that they are student-teaching in schools that, that they, that they want, that they enjoy, that they feel connected to. At the Boys and Girls Club, when you come to our classrooms, you, we have African-Americans in, in leading every room at the club. And so, we met with Dr. Seymour and Dr. Lenthicam and said, okay, if we have this and we've got these Lincoln students that are falling in love with Jeff City kids, let's pipeline, let's, let's try to segue into getting some careers. I think that's what it's going to take, is some out-of-the-box thinking.
Okay. Steve?
I'm not even sure what the recruiting, how you go about recruiting teachers. I'm, I'm just not, like, again, I'm just not familiar with the method. I'm, I'm on a learning curve here, but I, I do know the obvious. And the obvious is this, let's say you're going to grow your own, well, that's a, how many years out is that? If, if we want to have the best teachers and to develop diversity, that maybe needs to be done by actively recruiting, going out and getting teachers in. Whether it's in the Wall Street Journal or what, I don't know. I, I'm not, I don't know how they do that. I will say this, I don't care what color the teacher is, I don't care about sexuality or gender. I do care about their credentials and, and their work ethics and, and that, how good are the teachers? Should it turn out, if we could get lucky and, and, and get minorities in the classroom, more the better. It's fact of life that we live in a It's a fact of life that we live in a diverse society. There's certain percentages are going to be minorities, there's certain percentages are going to be the majority. So I mean, that's a fact of life. A kid walking in a classroom sees X amount of white students and X amount of minority students, that's called life. Whether the teacher's black or white means nothing to me. What it means to me is I want the best teacher. And if we can get diversity and minority teachers, more the better. But the bottom line is, is quality. I'm not PC on this at all.
I find the diversity topic to be a very hard one to talk about. Probably shouldn't be for me, but it is. I tell my team of campaign people that all the time. So I grew up in this city, born and raised, and as an African-American student going through this school district, it was very hard to not find teachers who looked like me. It was very hard to feel like I was understood. My counselors didn't look like me. My principals didn't look like me. And finding a teacher, Stephanie, who looked like me was hard to do. So I will say that diverse, you want the best, yes. However, the reality is, if you take a white child and you put them in the inner-city in an all-black school, or a majority-black school, they're probably going to find themselves uncomfortable because you just, what makes you comfortable is what you're familiar with. And so if I can see people like me, and it lets me know that they're more than likely going to understand the issues that I'm having and the struggles that I'm having. When it comes to recruiting, I don't know how recruiting is done. But I can say that you, I've said this before, I will be finishing up my elementary education degree here in a few years. So if I walked into our Board of Education building, I would not want to continue to pursue a career in this district. And that's only because the Board of Education building will tell me what the school system looks like. And the Board of Education building itself is not diverse when it comes to race or culture. So I wouldn't want to. I would prefer to go somewhere and teach where I know that people are going to be there who look like me. Because it is hard to work with people who don't look like you, to work, or to go to school in a place where there's not a lot of staff that look like you do. Because you need to feel comfortable and you've got to feel understood. You want the best people for the job, but you also want all of our students to feel like there is someone in this building that can relate to me.
Okay. Laura Lee?
Yeah, we've had difficulty recruiting minorities. And our teachers and our administration, they don't reflect the population of our students. And we've been working at that. I don't know that it's intentional that it's that way, and I don't know that we're doing the right things. I think we might be able to do better. I don't know. Again, I'm not an HR person either. I don't know about recruiting. However, I was extremely excited about the Grow Your Own program. I met a professor at, and she talked to me about Dr. Seymour, and I immediately called Shelby Scarborough and said, "We need to get with Dr. Seymour, and we need to get on this Grow Your Own program. We need to identify students in our school district who are willing to go through a teaching, even at Lincoln, and keep them here." Because it's hard to recruit to Jefferson City, Missouri. I mean, there's not a lot of people who want to come from New York City to Jefferson City, Missouri. I mean, you know, and you can't get some of these inner-city good teachers to come to Jefferson City. So we have to figure out a way to solve the problem. And I love the Grow Your Own program. And it's, no, it's not going to overnight fix our problem, but I think that we can really start moving the needle with that program. And I'm excited about it.
Okay. Next question. Steve, what do you think the district's facility construction renovation priorities should be after the completion of the two high school projects?
Repeat that question, please.
What do you think the district's facility construction and renovation priorities should be after the completion of the two high school projects?
I would think the construction would be done. I don't know that anything else needs to be built, if that's the question. The priorities, they've already reinvented the old high school, and they've invented a new one. My taxes have gone up, so I don't think I want to reinvent anything more. For right now, I don't think there is anything else left to build, unless there's something I'm not aware of.
Okay. Jessica?
I'd say our elementary school playgrounds. I know that my kids at their elementary school, I've gone and just kind of walked around on their playground while they play, because I check in on them every now and then. And they could definitely use some updates. I mean, just kind of some new equipment, maybe some better stuff, because it's limited to what's out there already. And then the stuff that's out there isn't necessarily in the best shape or the best condition. So I'd say definitely take a look at our elementary school playgrounds, and then maybe our middle school tracks.
Okay. Laura Lee?
Okay, so I co-chaired the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. And I'm passionate about this one because I think what we've done in this community is wait until there's a crisis and then beg the people for money so that we can build a facility. And I believe that we need to be on a more systematic schedule. And we developed a plan, a 20-year plan of what facilities we were going to need and when, knowing that we were going to have to relook at it. And then when we built the, we asked on the bond issue for the second high school, we said the next focus is going to be on the east side. But the reality is, every single one of our schools is going to have overcrowding issues. Our middle schools are busting. We got problems at both middle schools. We've got problems at many of our elementary schools, which is exactly why we created a boundary policy, to say that we are not going to look at boundaries every 20 years because it's a hard conversation to have. We're going to look at boundaries every three to four to five years. And if we need to shift populations to keep the number of students in an elementary school, we're going to do it. And I know it's emotional, and I know it makes people unhappy, but it's either that or raise taxpayer dollars and build more elementary schools. But we are going to have to solve some problems at our middle schools probably next, or another elementary school on the east side of town, and then shift a bunch of population through all the elementary schools. But I am, I think that we need to go back to that 20-year plan that we developed and see what was next on the list.
Okay. Stephanie?
I sat on the same committee under Laura Lee, and I absolutely agree. A lot of people, a lot of stakeholders in our community spent a tremendous amount of time. We studied the conditions of the buildings. We studied the current overcrowding. We looked at what was projected growth of overcrowding. At the time, East School, it was shocking what a low score that building had. I know that the district thankfully has invested a considerable amount of money to renovate. But I'm with Laura Lee. A plan was put into place about a new school on the east side, about a potential additional middle school. There's a plan in place, and we need to follow it. Revisit it, of course, but we need to follow it. But I will say, what Steve said, we have to breathe for a minute. We can't just go right next year and say, "Okay, we need more money." But I recall, I was involved in the bond committee as well, that we will be able to do a few renovations when we pay down that bond, where we don't have to go back to the community for more tax dollars. So I agree. We have a plan. We need to follow it.
Okay. Jessica, during the campaign to pass that bond issue and operating levy increase for the two high school plan, the board committed to next addressing space and facility issues at East Elementary School. If you're elected, would you be committed to fulfilling that promise?
For East?
Yes.
Yes, that's actually where my oldest daughter started. So when the boundary lines happened, it was a little bit frustrating because she had gotten so used to staff there. I actually went to East and graduated my fifth grade year from there. So I definitely say that that school, I feel like, has been neglected for a very long time. Not just as far as renovations and the space that they have, but, I mean, I think they've been neglected academically as well. But I definitely would, I can't say that I can promise that, you know, East School would have some things done, because there's other people that have to be convinced to make that decision. But I can definitely say that I would definitely be pushing for East School to get the things that they need to help with their space, whether it be staffing, more classrooms, additions to the building, not just trailers in the parking lot. I definitely would be pushing for them to get some things.
Laura Lee?
Well, I was part of the people who made that commitment. And I think what our commitment was, that we would do something on the east side of town. We have, since then, we have moved some population out of East over to Morale Heights, and we have, East has gotten some significant renovations. And so I think that's helped alleviate the overcrowding at East. And I think things are a little bit better there. But I am committed to our next, we have to do something either on the east end of town or with both middle schools. We've got to do something to alleviate the population at our middle schools and on the east end of town.
Okay. Stephanie?
I am so grateful that some money was put into East School. It's hard for me, where I work, not to be extremely passionate about the learning environment at East School. So I'm glad that they reduced the population, put some real renovation in the building. Our Long Range Strategic Planning Committee recommended, as Laura Lee said, a new facility of some sort on the east side of town. Now, whether that is a new East School, a second elementary school, potentially kind of like how we did LC and TJ on both sides of town, that there is a school built on both sides that, kind of like a five, six, maybe, type building, a junior high. I think that we definitely need to hold true to that commitment that that committee, it was the second recommendation. And the question, I remember the debate was, the high school or East School? And we all felt that the high school situation was more critical. It impacted more children. But I would definitely be committed to something new on the east side.
Steve?
You know, on the playground there, the asphalt playground, they've got these squares about yay big, different colors where the kids line up on, you know, it's what the teachers control the kids, you know? I painted about four dozen of those on my hands and knees, and I was not passionate about doing that. Not at all. It hurt. My wife's, my church adopts that school. It's their school. So we're, I'm familiar with the school and the playground. And that does, yeah, that, east side of town has, by purpose or accidental or whatever, is kind of neglected. It's just an old part of town. It's just an older part of town. Most of the people there are middle income, you know, they don't have a lot of money to throw around. And it does need some help, and it has for a long time. It was in the paper quite a bit concerning the high schools, you know, the east side of town's getting a raw deal because of it. But I don't think that. I think that the right decision to build a school where it was at was the right decision, of course. But yeah, I think the East School could use a little TLC, absolutely. Get somebody to paint those squares.
Okay, so we'll start with our closing statements at this time. So we'll start with Laura Lee.
Oh, all right. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak tonight. I am interested in running for a second term because I feel like we have great momentum. I think we have plenty of problems to tackle, and I am not afraid to have those hard conversations and tackle those problems. But I think that over the last three years since I've been on the board, we've made tremendous strides. We got a bond issue passed. We've got a second high school that's been talked about in this community for 30 years. Our APR has come up from 70 to 87. And we've got, we are really putting some things in place to move the needle. And I'm excited about it. I'm really excited about where we can go with our public schools. And I'm not afraid to tackle some things that need to be tackled. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Stephanie?
My entire career right now is dedicated to serving the children in our community that come from some of the toughest backgrounds. And working with them, I see the struggles that they go through. I see improvements that could be made to benefit them and their academic performance. I think our school board is a great group of people that are truly committed and passionate about serving our district. And I think what I could bring as a school board member is to basically round that out and to be a voice for the children in our community that need us the most.
Thank you. Steve?
I moved to Callaway County to get out of town, basically, just because I wanted to live in the country. One of the things we looked for was a house that was in the Jefferson City School District. I was not going to leave the Jefferson City School District. Jefferson City School District gave a lot to my family. They educated my son. And I'm retired, and I play bad golf, and I got to thinking that there's something I could do to help pay back the community. And this just attracted my attention because, like it or not, the kids are the future. Whether you love them or hate them, they're still the future. And they need to be educated. That's my goal.
Thank you. Jessica?
I'm also thankful for the opportunity to run for this board. My interest was piqued when, being emerged in this community and from this community and dealing with a lot of kids in this community, friends' kids and things like that, kids at our church. I have found, I realized that academically, there is a huge focus on the academics, which is great. I think that's amazing. But my interest was piqued because socially and emotionally and mentally, I get the chance to deal with students after their elementary schools, their middle schools, their high schools are done with them with working at Lincoln. And that's definitely an area that needs some serious improvement. That's district-wise, across the board. Every state needs improvement in that, but definitely our district. So I love the academic side of things, and I definitely want to be a voice that brings some importance on parental involvement in the social, emotional, and mental well-being of our students.
Thank you. On behalf of the News Tribune, I would like to thank all of you for being here, participating in the forum, and graciously answering those questions. I'd also like to thank the city again and JCTV staff for their assistance in putting this forum on. In addition to stories about these forums in tomorrow's News Tribune, I need to get my plug in there right now, pick up your copy tomorrow. We will have a variety of other means by which you can become more informed about these races. We'll be asking the candidates questions that I did not get to tonight, and our hope is that we will be able to publish some of those in Sunday's paper and future issues of the News Tribune. Lastly, we will publish a voter's guide on Sunday, March 31st. The school district in democracy is served best by an informed and active electorate. I said this last night at the city forums, I repeat it here. We are best served when voters are educated about who they're voting for, why they're voting, and then getting to the polls. And that's my encouragement to us as voters, is that we would do the research and go to the polls April 2nd. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.